Discussion first, and then we'll take the hearts and minds discussion as item number two. So now is time for comments from the public. So please keep your comments respectful and recognize that anybody who is disrupting, recognized to disrupt the meeting will be asked to, will be removed. And please also recognize that comments from the public will be limited to the items of business on the study session agenda. So it looks like we've had people sign in. You will need to limit your comments to three minutes, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and the city of your residence. So the first person we have on the list here is Martha Hamilton.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council members, and everyone else. My name's Martha Hamilton. I am a homeowner in the Zenith neighborhood, and I want to be part of the attainable middle housing solution. And I'm here asking for your support and help. For me, attainable middle housing means homes that are owned, not rented, having indoor-outdoor living spaces that are high-quality, healthy, and beautiful, that are energy-efficient, having solar where possible, having a tree canopy additions, green hedgerows, not fences, supporting noise reduction and pollution reduction, and creating community, safety, and security. For a little background, because I did my little bit of research, 15 years ago, one could buy a home in Des Moines for less than $200,000. That same home today sells for $600,000. We've gone from being a middle housing community to a community that requires a moderately high income in order to afford to live here in 15 years. In 10 years, 10 years ago, my home was assessed at $177,000. Last year, it was assessed at $560,000. That's a 316% increase. That's not attainable middle housing, and that was just 10 years. I pulled up an inflation calculator because I wanted to know what that would be if we just took the value from 10 years ago and adjusted it for inflation. That would be $231,500. Again, today's current assessed value is two and a half times the inflation adjustment, just in 10 years. So we find ourselves needing to get creative to find ways to provide attainable middle housing. I know there'll be lots of solutions in the comprehensive plan. I'm advocating for one because I want to be part of the solution. I'm told construction costs now for one small home, so like a backyard cottage, runs about $750 a square foot if you're going small, four or 500 square feet. That's $300,000 for that home. So what we need to do is find a way to create homes that cost less than that and have them be available to people. And so that's the challenge, because to me, attainable middle housing means $150,000 to $250,000. And as much as I would love to underwrite, or supplement, or subsidize someone else, I don't have the means to do that. So what I want to do is put in my sweat and my effort and find ways to create some solutions for this. It won't be the solution for everyone, but some solutions for this. And I really need your help. And so what I'm asking for is for, in the comprehensive plan, to have a part that allows homeowners to build multiple buildings, up to 35% lot coverage. Because at 35% on my lot, I could put five cottages and still not hit 35%. And in that, I could create something beautiful for people. Because we have more buildings, we then have some cost effectiveness. I would be happy to support neighbors who wanted to do the same thing and help them with the things that I've learned, so that they could be part of the solution, too. And I really do ask for your help. I gave you a little, I home grew this little outline of what I could do on my property. It's just an example, just so you can see what it might look like. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Next, we have Bill and Scott.
Good evening, Bill and Scott. I live here in Des Moines, and I wanted to address the topic of, I kind of call it a soundproofing ordinance. And it'll be discussed tonight, and I think the timing's perfect for this. You know, it came about when we had the meeting that talked about the new development area off 216th up there on the hill. And we've all spent some time on that hill. The noise is horrific from aircraft, you know? Our Veterans Day celebration is a tough celebration to get through. So I think everybody recognized it's an important challenge to that area. And yet, you know, in that discussion, they talked about the ordinance, and it was kind of like, we've already got that started, is what we'd heard, and it's been remanded to one of the committees. So the feeling was it was going to get done. And I've been up here twice before to encourage people to move that forward. And then, most recently, at the economic development meeting, I heard that it was a lesser priority because there are more priority things going on. I find that kind of awkward, because I'm proud of what this city does. We put environmental features first in all that we do, you know? Whether it's bioswells, or electric engines on our ferry, all that kind of stuff. And I think it's awkward to say we worry about the fish habitat, and we need to give equal treatment to the residential habitat. And I think the noise on that hill has got to be mitigated. We need that ordinance, and my ask tonight is that, as you discuss that, you reconsider its priority and find a way to move that forward and get it going. Because meanwhile, the project is underway, you know? We've got people with interest up there, and they're ready to go. And without that ordinance, we can't cause them to address those requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Linscott. Next, we have Paulette Agen.
Hi, my name's Paulette Agen. I didn't really prepare anything. My building burnt. My building caught fire last week, and I'm sorry. I read in the last quarter's Des Moines magazine that the city council was going to be working on the multifamily zoning for, you know, that, the zoning that I believe that the governor put into effect, signing the multifamily, and that I read someplace that the zoning was going to be changed, or they were going to come up with a plan on when to change it sometime in 2024. And my building, even though right next to me is multifamily zoning, mine's zoned for duplex townhome, the few on the actual cul-de-sac are. And my building's a little different than the other ones, because I don't have a garage. So I have entrance on both levels. So each of my townhomes are about 1,700 square feet, three bedrooms, two backs, approximately. And trying to rent that this, this year took over five months. Not many people need to rent something that big. I had to reduce the rent multiple times, and I had hundreds, if not thousands, of people wanting a one- or two-bedroom, which I would love to turn my building into a fourplex, not change any of the outside structure, even though obviously, after what happened this last week, will have to be replaced. But I just would like to separate the downstairs from the upstairs, making the downstairs in each unit one bedrooms, and the upstairs two bedrooms, giving more families a place to live, and obviously needed in this area. And I was actually part of the FBA moving to Des Moines from Renton. That's 17,000 people approximately working in just that building, and not to mention the other development and business that I'm sure was put in the city to help with infrastructure, bringing in income and everything else. Yet I have a former colleague who's an engineer there, who's about 32. He's now looking to move to a one-bedroom from his current one-bedroom in Federal Way. Can't find any place. He's not even looking in Des Moines, because there's nothing even close, even though he might want to. I have multiple friends there that would love a two-bedroom, one-bedroom, and I don't see why we wouldn't want, you know, professional, young people living in our community renting because they don't want to buy right now, or maybe they can't. Especially in our, my son just bought a house, $600,000 he had, he had to buy one in Renton, and he remodeled it, and he did well, but that's, that's all I had to say.
Paulette, I'm so sorry for your loss. Yeah, so sorry that's, that's happening to you right now. Next up, we have Barbara McMichael. Hi, Barbara.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Buckston, for saying that we were mixing it up tonight, because I am a little mixed up about what community development entails. I've brought a little laundry list of things that concern me, or that I'd be interested in working on as a resident and assisting our city, so I'm just going to run through them real fast. So first of all, I wanted to say that-
Excuse me, so did you look at the, so you just brought those with, but you weren't sure what was on the agenda tonight?
Well, I, I can run through it so fast.
Go ahead, we're good.
I'm a 92nd person.
Okay, go ahead, no worries.
First of all, Des Moines Masonic Home, I really regret that I wasn't able to, and I know I'm not supposed to be talking to the council about it, but I will be submitting a letter about preservation of the Masonic Home. I think that's an important part of our community. Secondly, the Department, Washington State Department of Ecology, has issued a map that's showing the environmental health disparity map. And if you look, and it's for the whole state, and the worst areas of air pollution and health impacts are denoted in dark purple, number 10. And that's us. And it's all of the, the communities around Sea-Tac Airport. And that's deeply concerning to me, and to all of us who live here. We don't want to live in the most polluted place. And one of the solutions that I think we can be concentrating on when it comes to community development is talking about our tree canopy. And I know that the Port of Seattle funded Fort Terra to do a tree canopy study for Des Moines back in 2017. At the time, they came back and said that Des Moines has 29% tree canopy. Healthy tree canopy is supposed to be for cities in the Pacific Northwest, 40% to 60%. And so we, that was back in 2017. I know we've lost tree canopy since then with the development up on 24th. So I think that's something that our community, our city really needs to concentrate on, and I am here to be of assistance in whatever way we can. But I want that to be part of the policies as we think about moving forward. Economic development, which maybe is part of community development, Bartels, the, I missed my Bartel store, and the whole development along the highway, and for the families on Pacific Ridge, I just want a healthy, economic retail and otherwise corridor for the kids who have to cross the street to go to the schools and stuff. So I hope that that's a priority that the council will be considering. And that's all I'll bug you with for now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there anyone else who planned to give public comment tonight, did not realize that they needed to sign up in order to do so? All right, thank you. So next is our items of discussion tonight, and as mentioned before, we're going to take item two first, which is our Community Development Department 2024 Work Program. So I am going to turn this over to a presenter. All right, Denise.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Denise Lather, Community Development Director. We'll have a couple of staff co-presenting. We have Laura Tchico, who's the Planning and Development Services Manager, Dan Hopp, who's our building official, and Jason Waiki, who's a senior planner. But before we start our presentation, I wanted to introduce one of our new planners, who started in November, Peyton Murphy. I'm going to make Peyton stand up. So Peyton came to us from Kellits County, and former, before that, she worked for the city of Reno, Nevada. And she brings experience in permitting, environmental planning, floodplain management, SEPA, environmental sustainability, and permitting. And she's also diving in to help us with the comp plan updates and some of our work program. So with that, go ahead to the next slide. So this is just our, as a refresher, this is the organization of our Community Development Department. So we have, including myself, there's 14 full-time employees, well, actually, I should say 13. And then we have an extra hire, a senior plans examiner, that assists us when we have a higher workload. Next slide. So this slide, I won't read everything on the next two slides. I know we presented this to you last year as well, but Community Development has four full-time employees, so that's Laura Tchico, and then the four, and the three planners that work under her. The department is charged with long-range planning. We have day-to-day customer services, where we provide development review and permitting. And projects range from everything, from critical area reviews to subdivision short plots, design review for commercial projects, business license reviews, signed permits. And then the plan development arm of that focuses on our long-range planning, economic development. We manage any kind of demographic update information with the state and with King County. And we also draft legislation to bring forward to council. Laura Tchico's been the main person coordinating our solid waste management contract and recycling. We're all involved with code enforcement and emergency management and response. Next slide. So next slide is our building division. There's a lot of overlap between what building and planning does. The buildings involved with the plan reviews for construction of buildings, they handle all of the inspections for the buildings while they're under construction, big focus on fire and life safety, and they're sort of the arm over South King Fire. They work directly with South King Fire on that. And again, code enforcement and emergency management and response as well. And they probably have a greater role in that than Planning and Development Services. Next slide, please. So I apologize for the clarity of this slide. I just could not get it to come out clear on this. But in the council packet, you were provided an attachment that showed our 2024 work program. And I wanted to clarify that this is, this is really not 100% council's work program, but these are the items that are on our department's plates. And some of the, to help people understand how we've broken these into tier one, tier two, and tier three activities, is tier one are the activities that relate to permits that are in the door, that we have certain state mandated timelines to review and approve. So those are things like the Business Park Master Plan, the Zenith EIS, any day-to-day permits that come in the door. And we have just ongoing customer service is our number one priority when people are coming in the door. Then it also includes some of the work that we've been doing that are, are driven a lot by state mandates and laws, so the comprehensive plan update that have grant funding and state deadlines for completing that work. So that would include the comprehensive plan update, the middle housing, there's accessory dwelling unit legislation that came in. And then the public also has an opportunity during the year, we will occasionally get a request for a rezone, or something like that, or a comprehensive plan amendment. And it could even be coming from another department, say, for example, if parks acquired new land and designated it a park, we might do a comp plan update to add that to the preferred land use map. So that sort of breaks out the tier, tier one. And tier two items are, a lot of these items are ones that are either items that have come from council as things that they want to work on. So for example, the noise code and the short-term rentals were two items that were added to our work program. And those are scheduled for the 2024 period. Legal Department is assisting us with this work, and so we're sort of anticipating the Q2, Q3 timeline, that information will be coming, we'll be discussing it, and then information will be coming forward. And one, one item on the noise code, I know there's been a lot of discussion about just reinstating or re-adopting that old noise ordinance, and it's not quite as simple as that, because the codes, the building codes have changed over time, and energy efficiency and technologies have changed over time, that we need to, we need to be able to evaluate what could be carried forward and what needs to change. And so those are some of the things that we will be doing as a first step. And then, let's see. Yeah, and then the other items are code enforcement, and our city, we've pretty much been operating on a, focusing on complaint-based and fire and life safety as priorities. And then the tier three items are ones that have come up over the years, and we put them on our work program in hopes that we will have a chance to work on those. And so, you know, to the extent that another project gets delayed, we will try and pull things up if we have time to work on them. A couple of things I wanted to note on the slide that's different than what's in your council packet, is that we did make a few adjustments to the, and it was mostly moving things around. I bumped up the, the building code update, which Dan Hopp will talk about in a minute. And then Councilmember Harris had asked about the Sustainable Airport Master Plan EIS timeline, and I had missed the meeting that they had adjusted the timeline again. So that's really going to be coming out in Q4 of 2024. But I've been participating in the airport community meetings called START, and so we get, as I get updates, I share those with the city manager, and so he can always provide you updates if anything changes on that. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Laura Tchico, oh, Tim, sorry.
Can I just add something on this slide?
Sure.
So I think we tried to clarify this a little bit from the committee meeting last week to today, because of some questions that the committee had and that the public had. So the tier one activities, those are activities that we have to do right now. It's either our permitting, that's our everyday work that we do, customer service, answering anyone's question that comes to the counter, and then items that have deadlines that we need to get adopted by certain timeframes. Tier two, those are also items that we're working on and that we plan on, on doing this year, as time allows. So it shouldn't be looked at as those are lesser priorities, it's just that they don't have specific deadlines based on state law, or funding, or something like that. So certainly, we've updated that to reflect that, you know, that we've, we've been given direction from the council on, on these items. We're working on them, we'll be bringing them forward this year, unless something drastically changes, and we can provide updates on that. So really, tier one and tier two are active. Tier three is not at this moment.
Great, thanks, Tim. Oh, okay, I guess we'll have Jason go next, and you can flip to the next slide, please.
I wanted to give a brief update on the comprehensive plan. The updated timeline is on the screen there. So our consultant, AHBL, who presented on, at the economic development meeting last week, is helping us with this effort. So so far, the city has engaged the public at several events in 2023, including National Day Out and the farmer's market. The public was encouraged to complete a survey that AHBL and the city put together. AHBL discussed that on, or last week. AHBL completed a gap analysis and initial edits to the comprehensive plan so far. Recently, the city engaged the tribes and other important stakeholders. And we're currently now at the halfway point, roughly. AHBL and the planning team are currently working on edits to the comprehensive plan and development regulations. We're taking into account changes in state law, public's input, city's characteristics, with a goal of completing the draft plan by June 30th, 2024. Or not, yeah, that's the draft plan. The final adoption before December 31st, 2024. We'll continue to brief the Economic Development Committee and this council along the way.
So intertwined with that comprehensive plan update on the work program are several work items related to implement mandated state legislation. 2023, and the state legislature's been called the Year of Housing, and there were several bills that affect the city, and probably most significantly is House Bill 1110 that's related to middle housing. And it requires local governments, including Des Moines, to allow for increased density and types of housing in areas that are currently zoned for single-family. As Jason described, the periodic review and update to our comprehensive plan is due by December 31st of this year. Development regulations to implement House Bill 1110 have to be adopted by June 2025, which is six months after the comp plan update is complete. And so the initial work on this will run concurrently with the comp plan update, and it will inform policy updates for the housing element and many or most of the other elements of the comp plan. Commerce grant funding and consultant contracts were approved for signature by the city council on December 14th of last year, and we received the fully executed grant contract from Commerce last week and are routing the consultant contract right now. The scope of work is going to be similar to what was done for the Housing Action Plan and the Comprehensive Plan Update. It includes preparing a public engagement plan, a mapping study to determine land capacity, a policy discussion on a menu of options with the Economic Development Committee, and the preparation of draft regulations for the city council.
And that will include, the public outreach piece will be able to engage community members, stakeholders, and gather input throughout that process as well. You can go ahead and bump to the next slide, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're going to be introducing Title 14 to you guys at February, at the February 22nd council meeting. The intent of that is to provide an overview of like the, what it is, why we're doing it. And it's not meant to be a detailed discussion or anything at that moment, but it's, it's going to give you the overall, high-level overview of it. We will not need any council action at that meeting. The overall idea is to hopefully adopt the proposed budget, or not budget, the proposed amendments to the DMMC, which is meant to coincide with the building codes that are going to be adopted statewide, March 15th, pending any other delays. So that's, that's it. Most of them are, are very minor and just cleaning up language and things, but there are some amendments for you guys to, to review, so.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, appreciate that. That is a lot of work. Did you have any comments before I opened?
Yeah, I'll just add on to that. So Title 14, Dan, our building official, he has a list of cleanup items. That does not include the sound code. This is kind of housekeeping items, updating, references, that kind of thing. So rather than, because we, our study session on March 7th is devoted to our communications consultant, we're going to bring forward an item on March, or February 22nd- consultant, we're going to bring forward an item on March, or February 22nd, basically introduce the code amendments, let the council get familiar with them, and then we'll bring it back on another date for council consideration. It'll be essentially a study session item, but we'll do it at a regular meeting because our study session is, is already booked. So that's what he was referencing, and so we'll be discussing that in late February and then again in March at a regular council meeting.
So when you talk about Title 14, you're just talking about a section of the Des Moines Municipal Code, correct?
Yeah, Title 14 is our buildings and construction codes.
Thank you. All right, so I'd like to open it up for questions and discussions amongst the council. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, where to begin? So this is a potentially nerdy thing, but this chart, it would be swell if it were 3D in a sense. And what I mean by that is that this gives me the timeline, but it doesn't give me the weight. And what I mean by that is the number of person hours, the intensity of effort, and that to me is really significant in trying to understand how the city, like in other words, you could have something that's two days, but you've got all hands on deck, 24, you know, and I would just like to get a sense of like how much work or intensity of effort, or however you want to word it, goes into each of these tasks. Because for me, I'm always wondering, okay, what's it okay to ask for? Right? You know, in other words, if you're already running at 105% on the reactor, okay, then I guess it's impolite of me to ask for anything else. So I would just like to get a sense of how these tasks, what the workload is.
Well, I would say Denise probably would say you're working at 125%.
Yeah, 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 that's right. The stuff is getting ready, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying for the future, it would just be helpful to me.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind me answering, I mean, I've done that in the past, and I think we're always juggling because we don't know what kind of projects come in the door and that, but I can tell you that the, the grant-funded work, even though we have consultants that are supporting the work, you can't hand 100% off of a comp plan update off to a consultant to do. We have the local expertise from our staff level, and so those grant funds just cover a fraction of the time it really takes to do the work, and the same with the middle housing and the ADU stuff. We're going to spend many, many hours on that because we have to dig into our code, we have to understand the impacts of how we're going to implement these regulations. So, yeah, it's much more than we have bodies.
Yeah, no, I'm, but even like the tier three stuff, okay, like I'm just, it would just be helpful to get a sense of, of how much work would it take? Okay, if we don't have the bodies to do it now, how many bodies would we need? Or how many six-figure consultants would you want to have to enable the chicken thing? Or, you know, more to my speed, the, you know, basically zoning and encouraging economic development at the light rail station or, you know, I mean, all these are very worthy, and so I, I would just like to be able to quantify them in, if not in terms of timeline, at least in terms of cost. So I guess that's, and those are, and, but on a practical level, is there any way to give, you know, I don't want to comment about their individual cases, but I just want to say that Ms. Hamilton and Ms. Agan, they provided two very good use cases, and it would be, you know, we're dealing in abstractions, and I just wonder, is there a way to comment? Or how soon before we can comment about, you know, the, how realistic the things they have asked for are going to be?
Well, as Laura had indicated, we just received our signed grant.
Yeah.
Agreement with the, from the Department of Commerce, so we haven't really been able to kick off that body of work, but it is something that we're, we are going to be kicking off this next month, and there's, we're going to be working with our consultants to provide a public outreach plan and all those task items, and so we are aware of the comments that Ms. Hamilton and others have provided, and we've got a folder of emails and information, and she handed me a handout as well. So when the time comes, we are definitely going to be engaging stakeholders in discussions.
And I just wanted to say, it's really a lovely handout. I mean, seriously, what, what she prepared. I've, I feel like I'm, you know, monopolizing time, so I'll just take it to my colleagues and come back.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other responses or any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, Denise, as I understand it, in, in your tier one, you're dealing with the middle housing and the ADU issues, a lot of which are contained then in the presentation that we heard from Ms. Hamilton, correct? So a lot of those issues are going to get addressed, and they are top-tier issues in this plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and so you're already anticipating doing that work during the year because there's a timeline on it?
Yeah, we don't have any grant funding for the ADU work, but we are, we do have some deadlines for that, so it's, we're trying to fold all these pieces in, and there's a lot of overlap in the work that we're doing, so as Laura indicated, some of the work in the middle housing is going to feed into the housing element and some of the other elements of the comp plan, and so there's, there's a lot of cross coordination there that happens.
And then, let me, let me kind of follow up at the, there's been a long-term conversation about downtown trying to develop essentially mixed use with residential down there, which was, as I understood it, particularly the one, the two-bedroom issues that had been brought up. And so is that, is that built in here somewhere?
The downtown zoning in, in the Marina District already allows for mixed-use development, so it allows for, like, Des Moines Theater has multifamily housing above, they range from studios to one bedrooms to two bedrooms. So a lot of it depends on what the developers propose. I mean, we can't dictate what developers come in and do, but, you know, each, we don't preclude them from doing a particular type of development unless it's not a permitted use in that particular zone.
And so that, that is a permitted use in the downtown core. Is it up the hill, a permitted use?
If, if you're just talking mixed use, it's permitted in the Pacific Ridge Zone, and we have zones around Highline College and Woodmott Commercial Zones, and then we have other zones that allow for townhomes or duplex zones. It just depends on where the parcels are located.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to kind of piggyback on Deputy Mayor Steinmetz's question. The challenge, let me find a way to pose this as a question. The challenge in the downtown region is not downtown, is, is not, the downtown zone is not the fact that we don't allow mixed use, it's the height that we allow, and so we're still at 35 feet above the highest street, right?
The base height, it depends on what area you are, so we, we did update the zoning, and it's a little more select, and so on Seventh Avenue, there's an area where you can, we would allow up to three, three buildings to go to 45 feet outright, or 55 feet with a height bonus. And the QFC, the old QFC site, we had increased the building height to 55 feet, however, when that ordinance was adopted, they shifted what, the recommendation by council was to change where the height was measured from Marine View Drive to Seventh, and so it basically negated the height difference because there was a little bit. And then there, the two, there were, we would allow up to two properties to go to 45 feet on Marine View Drive, but yes, it's been really challenging because most development projects to what they call pencil out, they really are looking for, I mean, if you look around the region, they're six, seven-story buildings.
They need 85 feet.
Or 75, yeah.
That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, I, I mean, the list here, again, appreciate the tier and understanding the tiers, and I love the fact that you mentioned tier-two activities being worked, worked on for the most part. The only ones in tier three particularly, and it's because of the fact that we're going to make a tremendous investment in our Marina in the near future, the building heights and the commercial rooftop deck, which I could see those being paired together and possibly tossing in maybe some zoning requirements in the sound transit, that maybe we could possibly use a consultant for those things to at least get us going on the road, and because I think we need to be ready, we're going to need to assess what we can do in town, and we're going to need to assess what the infrastructure is, what it's capable of, and what needs to be improved, because we need to be ready for the future, both there and up on PAC Highway. I think PAC Highway is a little bit more infrastructurally sound, but I think that's a, that's a priority. If there's a way we can do it without taxing our staff at this point, and maybe, you know, that, that's something I would recommend, we go in that direction.
My comments are, I couldn't agree more.
If, if a council member strongly recommends something like that, is there, you know, taking motions or doing actions, but if we have a head nod, at least somebody has some input?
Yeah, so I will say, I mean, we, as we start checking off tier-two activities, we'll need to start filling in new ones. So I think, you know, if the council is interested, that, that could be kind of our top priority from tier three, once we finish some of these tier-two activities.
Yeah, I think, and I understand that that's what you do. My only comment was is if there was a way to possibly use a consultant, maybe to get us going and rolling on that, so the transition to when our staff takes over would be a little easier, and some of the groundwork might be done if they could do that possibly.
Councilmember Nutting.
I, I couldn't agree more, and, and it has been a challenge for the last 10 years to get anything going in the downtown region of substantial notability. The theater's one, the postage stamp of the old Clayton Tavern sites, the other, and then the 55 and older community that was built. There are a lot of vacant lots, a lot of derelict buildings, a lot of things that could be done down there, and we've, we've done nothing to address that infrastructure-wise and code-wise. So with my 10-year sitting here, and we've done nothing, I, I, it's time to move it forward, so I, I don't know which direction we need to move in, but absolutely, infrastructure and, and code and, yeah.
Thank you. Denise, did I say, see your hand? You wanted to be recognized for a moment?
Oh, I just had, I know back in, I want to think it was 2010 to 2012, we did do a lot of analysis and modeling of building heights, so we wouldn't necessarily be starting from scratch, that we could refresh some of that, but as a starting point for discussion, so that may help at some point.
So possibly a discussion with the Chair of Econ for putting on the agenda as a discussion segment.
I accept.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I, I have some other questions, but I have a practical ask. The one thing or two things that I hear most from local businesses are signage and parking. And like Councilmember Nutting, these are longstanding things to, that, at some point, there needs to be room for that discussion. It's the practical thing that so many of the businesses want, apart from new construction. And I just, I don't know how to get it, you know, is there some kind of will to get that on the, somewhere on here? It just seems basic, and I'm talking about just Pacific Ri, Pacific Highway and Marine View Drive and Seventh. You have to give people more visibility, and you have to give them, you know, a place to stop. Simple as that.
Councilmember Nutting.
My, my comment to that is, is we addressed sign code probably five years ago, maybe six, and we brought sign code up to what was acceptable to the businesses at that time. I, I agree, but I've not heard, there was a lot of squawk about the sign code prior to us addressing that six years ago. I think, what, was it six, maybe eight years ago? But there, there hasn't, I haven't heard anything about sign code, so I, I wouldn't be, unless somebody reaches out to me, or you can forward me some emails, I'm, I'm not going to accept anything in economic development that'll allow us to speak about sign code, but, yeah, I, I agree with the other part.
I mean, parking.
Parking has, has been a challenge. Agreed.
Well, I'll, I'll just, I'll agree with you to the extent that I tell people all the time, if you don't show up, you know, yeah, that's the way to be heard, so I would just encourage businesspeople to show up for this stuff, but I, I would love to see some kind of discussion on parking on this list, and that's that. I have other questions, but I just want to defer to my colleagues at first.
So would that be something else that would be included in the, somewhere along the line this year, could put it up for a discussion item in Econ if there's an agreement? If that is included?
I, I would support putting on the work plan in economic development. I mean, we've discussed it tirelessly, tirelessly over the years of what to do and how to do it. We are constrained with our downtown, and what do you do, start knocking down buildings and building parking garages for parking, but, you know, I would, I would accept the discussion somewhere on the work plan probably later in the year.
Okay. Got some head nods. Yes, Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, is there's a couple of options. I remember, I wasn't on council then, but there was a parking study done, I think, about seven years ago, and one, one of the factors was rethinking, so there's, there's obviously lots. A lot of people know the story about the lot across from the theater, the three lots, could have been a parking lot, the owner didn't want to do it or entered into a 10-year lease. 10 years later, we still have an empty lot. But there was also discussion about possibly, and it'd been done, I think, in the 70s or early 80s, where we changed the flow of traffic, and you changed Seventh as one route, one way, and Marine View Drive the other, and there thought there, there could be several, I mean, multiple parking spots. I don't want to quote a number, but I would, I think it was well over 100 additional spots that maybe we could do. So if we have that discussion, it should be creativity in that regard. The other potential, of course, is we, the south end of the Marina is often unused and shuttles and stuff like that, so maybe we can be flexible. But, so if there's a discussion, please make it.
Global.
Global.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Harris, it sounded like you had a few more.
I just, I, watching last, the last Economic Development Committee, I was thinking back to Larry Picard, and, and it was, this is a very, I, I know I'm asking for trouble, but with code cleanup, I, I remember something Dan Hop said, you know, that the goal was to somehow get the code cleaned up once and for all. I mean, I remember him saying that like 15 years ago, and so I guess I'm just, this is a naive question, but why does it keep needing to be cleaned up other than like new stuff? And I know what I'm, I'm going to get giggles, but, you know what I mean? In other words, yeah.
I can answer that. It needs to be cleaned up because politicians- It needs to be cleaned up because politicians keep changing things.
No, no, yeah, yeah.
But I mean, in the state, in the state, so state law, state law changes every year, and in, in hundreds of different ways, and when you look at the RCWs, I mean, they probably started out as one book, now it's a whole library.
I'm just trying to get a sense of like how much time that takes, and.
A load of time.
Yeah, I mean, technology changes, what people think is reasonable changes, you know, society changes, and so, you know, codes could be cleaned up probably every six months, every code that we have. I mean, we have codes about registering pinball machines, right?
Really?
Yeah, we do. And so, you know, there's issues that come up in a, in a city that the council adopts a code for, and then the issue goes away, and we still have it on the books. I mean, there's, there's tons of issues that are always being addressed, that need to be addressed. So yes, there is, there is no code that would last probably longer than fifteen years, especially in the building world, where everything is constantly being updated and changing.
So, so that leads into what I really wanted to ask about is, over the time that I've been watching, I, and forgive me if you don't feel this way, but I get the sense that the comp plan and all of this stuff is treated more as a have-to, as opposed to like a useful, more and more, it's just, oh man, we got to get it done by May first or whatever. So is there something that legislatively we could promote in Olympia to make this an easier process on an ongoing basis? This just seems like something that should be looked at, and I've seen, but, you know, but, but seriously, you could do a lot, you could, if you could make this process less onerous, it would say, right.
I keep looking at Denise, you know.
Is there something specific that, that could happen legislatively to streamline this stuff? And why is that, why is that a giggly thing?
Well, it's, it's like eliminate the Growth Management Act. I mean, but, but that's, that really is, that's, that's it, and I don't think that they would ever stand.
If you just accept that this is just inevitable, okay, a hundred percent, at some point, you have to make it reasonable to look at your processes and things that would make things move more efficiently. I mean, you know, and if you just say, well, that's just government for you, you know, okay, you might as well hang it up. So I, I just, I mean, I, I take your point, but I just don't think it should be something openly mocked. There should be something that the AWC or SCA, that all cities feel this way, and there's, surely there is some kind of legislative agenda that could promote making this process less onerous.
Well, I would do, yeah, so in state law, we have to adopt our comp plan, and so we say we have to do it. But it's planning, and that, that's how you create your city, that's how you, you build a community. Planners love planning, and they love the comp plan, and that's like their Bible, and that's how you get a city that works. And so, I mean, there are cities, right, like Houston doesn't have zoning, right? And so you have, you know, buildings next to schools, next to power plants, next to, you know, anything, and so that's, in Washington State, we, we plan, and we have requirements so that every city does it, because if you didn't have a requirement, there might be some cities that would say, no, we're just not going to do it. And so I, it is important, we do say we have to, maybe we could say we get to have it done by, you know, a certain date.
For, forgive me, I did not say that planning is unimportant, and I just want, okay, I said that it could be made less onerous, and I'm, I'll drop it, but the idea that it is not a worthy goal to make this process less onerous seems to me to be just, you know, wow. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember, or excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I just, we've been having a vice-civil discussion. Nobody said it's not a worthy goal. It is a worthy goal. You will find throughout the history of the state, there are bite-sized pieces of the state code that goes through processes to try to streamline and to try to get them more But to, you know, the planning process is dictated at the state, and as explained, it creates the ability for planning, for cities to plan how they want to be, and other cities are doing similar actions, so all the cities are doing kind of the same thing, and that's how they're regulated from the state. There are pieces of that that can always be addressed, and nobody's suggesting that that would not be a worthy goal, but to just say, how can we just make this more efficient? That, that is a valid, that is a valid question, but you got to break it down into bite-sized pieces so that people can do it.
I am asking this, I am.
Nobody is suggesting that it is not a worthy goal, so let's keep it civil, please. Don't take shots at your council, fellow councilmembers.
Don't believe I did, but I, I think it is a worthy, it is worthy of consideration to task someone to figure out a legislative agenda of items that seem particularly onerous to all of our cities, and to push that agenda as we do various policies on public safety and any number of issues, and I'll just drop it.
Well, Councilmember, so I do have a recommendation for you. So every year, there are senators and representatives that are interested in the update or amendment of the Growth Management Act, because there is a lot of messaging out there that says that it is beginning to outlive its usefulness. So there are legislators on both sides, both parties, it's bipartisan interest, and you might do a little bit of Googling, I mean, I just did here, some of them want to enhance a Growth Management Act with more climate resiliency, some of them would like to simplify it more, like you're saying, so if you're very interested, there are people out there, I think also the realtors of Snohomishin King County, I also think master builders, so there are some pretty big organizations that are interested in either the amendment or the total redo of the Growth Management Act, so it's not a ridiculous thought, but municipal government isn't the place, and you might be able to add your voice to one of these other people across the state who are seriously interested in it. So I would, I would recommend that. That's my thoughts on that. Any, any other thoughts? Okay. Any, so going to, back to this chart here, any other questions, Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, any other comments on the items in these tiers? Yes, Councilmember Oxiker.
Yes. Kent seems to be moving rather expeditiously on its transit-oriented development around the Kent-Demoine Station, and given that we do have the horrible sawtooth, are we at any kind of a disadvantage in that we're not prioritizing dealing with, with transit-oriented development zoning?
We did a coordinated effort with Kent back, we called it Envision Midway, where we looked at our zoning because of the sawtooth border, and so initially, we created a zone called Transit Community that mirrors their zoning across the street. I think it was back in twenty-twelve, we did a, no, it would have been around twenty-fifteen. We decided to do a little sub-area planning along South Two-Fortieth, across from Highline College, and the result of that is we created some, what we call the Preferred Land Use and the Comprehensive Plan, but we never went forward with the rezoning of that area. And so the zoning in that area, I think it was called Transit Community Residential, Transit Community Mixed, and we had some townhome that provided a little bit more buffer between the higher density and the single family. And so there is always the option of going through and moving forward with rezoning those areas. However, I think with the work that, that the planning team is going to be doing on the middle housing, that may be important for us to just reevaluate our thinking in that area prior to doing a rezone. It may be that it totally makes sense because it, it does match the densities that are on the Kent side.
Is that, you, is that sufficient for you? You have any other questions? Okay, great. Any other, oh, thank you. Councilmember Nutting.
I just have something to add, is the, the reason why we didn't rezone that, I believe it was staff's recommendation and part of council that chose not to rezone, but to have recommendations of what was going to be there, as opposed to constraints around what had to be there. And so that's why we just mirrored what Kent was doing as our preferred building codes, buildings that were up their heights and, and density. So that was just a little bit to add to that.
Okay, so we're talking then about modeling that was done seven, eight years ago, and now we're looking at actuals, what Kent is doing. Are we monitoring what they're doing and, and, you know, making sure that it is following what we thought was going to happen?
Well, they're their own city, so everything that's happening in the station area on the Kent side is per the codes that they created, and, and there's zoning is called like Midway Commercial and that, and so, you know, we, across the street, the Highline Place Development was developed under our Transit Community Zone, and so that's an example of, it was actually the first TOD in the area that we were anticipating for sound transit, so that was a good thing for us. And the exercise we did along South Two-Fortieth was more thinking about, we have such limited and segmented parcels on the west side, we have some parcels that are partially in Kent, partially in Des Moines, that focusing on South Two-Fortieth would help us in more of a place made, make it more of a place versus along Pack Highway. So, and there's a lot of community input during that process, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I appreciate the history about why it was decided, but I, I do think that one of the points I'm picking up from Jean, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that was before the light rail station was located and established that it was going to be in the location that it is now. Is that correct, or do we know at that time?
Our planning, when we were doing the planning with Kent, we looked at three potential station locations.
Okay.
So I-five on Thirtieth where the station is, and we also looked at options for Highline College at the time, so we had sort of looked at the whole area.
Thank you.
And, and we also looked at the fact that they kept holding the carrot over our head at Two-Sixteenth, which was never going to come to fruition, too, so.
Any other questions or comments on this segment of the meeting? All right, well, it looks like we concluded with item number one here, and I think that means the staff is probably dismissed. Is that true, City Manager?
No, we might need him to hang out for this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great presentations, and you know what? Good work, good work. So, let's see, let's take a look at the time. It's only seven o'clock. All right, so that takes us to discussion item number two, Hearts and Minds Fund Policy Discussion. So I wanted to read an intro to this. Okay, I've got to find it. So the purpose of this agenda item is to facilitate a council discussion of the Hearts and Minds Fund, and to create a policy that governs the collection and expenditure of funds. At the conclusion of this discussion, the city staff may be directed to draft a resolution containing the consensus of the council for consideration and approval at a future council meeting. So I would like to begin by opening up to discussion if anybody has a, needs clarity about, any more clarity about what it is before we begin the discussion or how it's been operating, and then we'll, I will open the floor for comments and recommendations. Anybody need clarity? Okay, I'm opening the floor for comments and recommendations.
I'll start.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Let's go through the seven points here. I have liked the Hearts and Minds Fund, yes, we probably don't have a policy, but I've liked how it's operated. Not only do we take for those of loss or congratulations or something that the council's billed, I felt we've been able to donate to various organizations, and it makes more of a statement than sometimes a proclamation or just acknowledgement. But going through these, formalized monthly dollar amount contribution, typically it's been twenty-five, I see no problem to change that. Process for increasing, decreasing monthly contributions, don't even think there's a need to, I think you just call it twenty-five dollars, and if the council wants to revisit again, should inflation take over and we got to give fifty or whatever. Ability for councilmembers to opt out of the fund, have no problem if they choose to do that, they would just recuse themselves in the votes. Eligibility of items for expenditures or funds, I think it's been at the discretion of the council, it should stay that. Recommend fund balance levels. I don't really think there needs to be a recommendation, I think we continue to grow it, I think we should be cognizant of the balance and know what it is, so we, we kind of maybe in some of our determining factors, we might limit contributions, but I don't think there should be any mindful, like have a ceiling or anything like that. Notice requirement for expenditure of funds, I'm not sure what that is, but I believe that in some cases, when I was talking to our chief administration officer, she couldn't issue the checks until the minutes were approved, or something along those lines. I would think, I would love to do it more immediately. And voting requirements for approval of expenditures, like I said, those that contribute can dictate what it is, and I think that it's, whatever presses, I think it'll evolve and change. When it was originally created, yes, it was something that, you know, for people that passed away and so forth, but there's a lot of great causes in the community, and I think it speaks volumes when we donate money to them. That's what I got.
Yes, Councilmember Nutting.
My only other comments for that is, I, I agree with Councilmember Mahoney, wholeheartedly. The, the few things that we've approved above, sending flowers and, and condolences to family members, being able to help out organizations that we believe in, with that, I couldn't agree more. I, I would like to know prior to voting on whether we're going to expend those dollars, what, what our fund balance is, just so we know. For example, we, we donated five hundred dollars to the, I believe, Lighthouse Organization. You know, could we have donated a thousand, or should we have pulled that back to two-fifty? You know, that would have been nice to know. But other than that, I, I couldn't agree more. I think what we have here in front of us, and being able to vote our minds on that, and, and those that contribute, to be able to vote, and those that don't contribute should abstain from voting, and we should go from there.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then you, Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, a couple of background things. I was really fascinated to read in the packet that there wasn't some sort of documentation that said, this is what this is for, and this is when it was established, and this is how funds were dispersed, and so it's one of those things that's, might be in an archive box somewhere or lost to history. But I do think a shared understanding. But I do think a shared understanding, an agreement of folks on the council would be very helpful so that you know what it is that you're contributing to and how it might be used. With that, I'm wondering if there is a record of expenditures from the past five to 10 years, and if we can see how else it's been used outside of just flowers or condolences. I also think it would be very interesting to figure out, like, what kind of counts as an organization that you may be supportive of, because I personally give money and donations to nonprofit organizations, but I don't expect that seven folks on a city council may agree that those are the types of organizations that you might support. And so I'm wondering also where this policy might live. Is this, since it's not a city fund, is this a policy that would live in the protocol manual, or could it be an MOA that we agree upon and move forward with? And just out of curiosity, I know that at some point, an excess of funds went to a scholarship. I believe it went to the Dollars for Scholars program, and we are sitting on quite a large chunk of change that could be dispersed to a scholarship at this time. So how often does it stay, just grow? But if it had at some point, like every two years if there's an excess amount, it gets donated to a designated charity, I would love to know if that is a procedure that had happened in the past, or where that fell out, because it seems like it used to be a practice and no longer is. And then I'm just curious if it earns interest.
I can answer some of those. Record of expenses, it's a bank account and we write checks, so we should have copies of those checks. Interesting note, what you said, lost in history, maybe. You know, it was never formally adopted because we have resolutions going back to Resolution One and Ordinance One. Was it a memo written at some point that, you know, is in a file that's now in the garbage somewhere? Possibly. But we've looked a lot before, and it's, we can't find it. Other questions? The dollar amount going to the scholarship, it's not by default, but I believe it's something the council has done in the last number of years.
I could clarify. So, a little over 20 years ago, Stephen J. Underwood, one of our officers, passed away. And we were doing several things, what a lot of the police and a lot of the former council members to pay respect to them wanted to honor. So every year, and just prior to that, they were having difficulty funding that particular scholarship. So we, as a group, have collectively every March 7th is the date, or that meeting closest to March 7th, where we would donate $1,000 to that in memory of his sacrifice. And that has supported that scholarship for years now, for the last, I think, five or six, when it was nearly, there was no funds at it all. That's the history behind that particular one. That's only been the only annual we've done. Everything else has been a particular group or organization might come to the meeting, and we feel moved to give.
Regarding how you would do this, my recommendation would be for the council to adopt a resolution. We could reference that resolution in the protocol manual. And then, as Councilmember Mahoney mentioned, if there were a need to change the policy, you would just amend the resolution at a future date. But that way, we could always have, we could search, we could find the resolution. It would be stored with the city clerk. So we won't lose it again.
I believe Councilmember Harris, you had your hand raised earlier.
Thank you. At the risk of sounding like Scrooge, I have, I think it's great if you codified it to be this, you know, the annual contribution to Officer Underwood. However, I think everything else should be limited to something like 50 bucks for flowers or whatever the going rate, because having the money in there creates the incentive to spend it. And I do not believe it is the council's business to pick and choose charities, certainly not people who come to a public meeting. It has the air of being supplicants and picking favorites, and I don't think that's a great look. And when you have that balance, it creates that optic of, if you show up with your charity, here's some, here's 500 bucks. And frankly, there are, I cannot pick and choose worthiness. There are just so many groups in this town who do not show up for the meeting, and it looks like we're playing favorites. And I just, you know, I don't agree. There are people I voted against on this, and then I give them a private donation because I think that's the right thing to do. And that's kind of where I'm at with this stuff. So, yeah.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
You know, one other concern that I have heard is that if a council member were to vote against a charitable, you know, against donating to a charitable organization, that they would be, you know, somehow ostracized, or there would be a negative connotation to that. And I really don't think there should be. I, we're all up here to, you know, address our own issues and determine what we think is right. And this is, you know, a relatively small amount that, at this point, everybody contributes to but doesn't have to. And if you feel, if you've been contributing, but you don't feel that this is the right thing to do, whether it's contributing to charities in general or this particular charity, you should be able to go ahead and, you know, state your position and not suffer from that. And so to the extent that there is any concern about that, I do want to sort of alleviate that, because I don't think it, it should be regulated to the point of, we can only send flowers, or we can only do certain things, because there are going to be things that come up that make sense. And, you know, I'm a little bit, I don't want to create something that people don't want to participate in, and I don't want to create something that people feel that they are compelled to participate in. But I think it is a really good idea for the city council at large to be able to, you know, say, hey, this is a worthy thing, and we have a fund that we can help with. And as a consequence, I'm really kind of torn at the idea of trying to write all this down and create a regulatory framework for this versus what we've been doing. So, you know, I want to, but I do want to encourage anybody, you know, make up your own mind, and don't feel badly about that. You should be respected for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, I was looking at number six, and I guess I read it a little differently than it's been presented. There's an element of surprise when this is brought up at the dais without any kind of, you know, previous notice that it was going to be brought up, so that the questions could be asked, and maybe some of the unease that people are voicing is that it, that could be alleviated. So I'm wondering if it would be possible to say, the notice requirement being, the council must be notified 24 hours prior to it being brought up at the dais, so that there's an opportunity to, to do some exploration first?
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney?
You know, this, the thing is, is that in many moments, it's been more on the pulse of what we just heard, it's an impulse type of thing, and the ability to do so. So I don't agree with any kind of requirement like that.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I actually would have to agree that I think less surprises at the dais are good. And so notice requirement is great. And I also feel like, because there isn't a clear understanding of what the fund is for, it means that groups in the community don't know that they quote unquote are eligible or can receive a donation in that regard. So then it becomes sort of an access issue. And I understand very much your sentiment that folks shouldn't be judged about their vote, but we all are. We are judged about every vote. We do, and I can't help perceptions and what folks in the public say is my underlying motivation for some sort of vote, whether it's true or not, because that's outside of my control. But I do think some framework would be exceptionally helpful, and it would help me give greater support if I understood how it was going to be used in the future. Unfortunately, it's the staff who might be tasked with coming up with that framework and not us. And so I would be supportive of the draft of motion that we have in front of us.
I think I would like to make a couple comments, and then Councilmember Harris, I'll call on you. So I think that there is value in having a unanimous cause, because if we, meaning establishing one or two categories that will always be unanimous. That way, every single person, if you decide you want to withdraw from it, that's fine. But then they're really, then the vote is always going to be unanimous, and nobody has to feel like any of their private funds are going to something they disagree with. Now, a death or a visit in the hospital doesn't have to be vetted. If you die, you're, that person is dead, and everybody's going to agree that it's okay to give condolences for that, even if you only found out somebody died an hour ago. If, and same thing with the hospital. Almost all other categories are going to require, you're going to want to look into it or know about it. Here's the, in my opinion, about offering nonprofits or charities from the dais, is that it requires you to make a vote about something that you can't totally vet. And here's the thing, our city has a system for that. We have created a human services advisory committee who works very hard to vet every single agency who receives funding from the city. And they work hard to create accountability even after their awarded grant funding. And there's nothing stopping us as individual council members from contributing to an individual cause that we see come to our podium. I've done it often, but that's on me. And if we contribute to a fund where it's going to be subject to a minority, or excuse me, a majority of votes, that means that somebody may always be subject to giving some of their funds to something they disagree with. And I think the pressure of that in public is, can be a little bit difficult. So I would like to recommend that we pick a couple of causes that are unanimously accepted as worthy, and then, and which also may include this scholarship. And then it's more a process of how much we want to do, like with the Dollars for Scholars or process for that. That way, if we decide to give money, it's always going to be unanimous. We could also decide on an amount, and then if we have, we create a minimum, and whatever's left over at the end of the year goes into the scholarship, down to a certain slush, like a certain cushion. And that way, nobody's on the hook for a political statement, for an emotional statement, for a on-the-spot vetting of an org. So that's my recommendation. Pick a couple unanimous causes, pick a cushion, pick a scholarship amount or process.
Councilmember Mahoney?
I can't agree with that philosophy or recommendation. A lot of things happen. It's been organic in its, in its action. Somebody comes here, maybe explains something, somebody feels moved, makes a motion. We have an event happen. To predisposition the money is not what it was about. It's not, it's not what the concept was. Yes, originally, maybe it was to give flowers to somebody who passed away, or their family or something like that, but it's morphed into this, and it needs to be more of an impulse. You can't have a formulaic thing. You can't lay it out to certain things. That's too textbook. This is, it's got to be organic. That was the mindset of it. That's our council members before us that created the process. That's what it was explained to me. That's the way I understand it. And to keep that integrity of what the purpose was is to keep it that way. So I, I'm sorry, I can't support that kind of recommendation. I just think we need to be more fluid.
Councilmember Harris?
So, you know, regardless of what people thought 30 years ago, you know, it can change into whatever. But I always got the vibe that, and I don't want to use the word emergency, but it was like event-based. And so a death, you know, or somebody in hospital. And so you could just say, oh, yes, this person is ill, and here's a small sum of money to, you know, express appreciation. But that's something different from somebody coming to a meeting and saying, let me tell you about my worthy organization, which is an ongoing kind of a thing, and showing a statement of ongoing support. I think that's a very different thing, and I hate the word emergency, but something that's event-based. I could see if, let's say, somebody at this, you know, somebody, they had a busted pipe, you know, and we wanted to, you know, show some kind of appreciation or condolence. But I am that small government kind of person, and I honestly don't, I'm not even sure there's a need for this if there was some unanimity on that philosophy, that it's money that should be used infrequently for an event-based kind of a thing. Doesn't have to be, you know, a sorrow, but just something unique, and not a source of, not a pool of money that organizations know they can, if they're clued in, they can just show up and say, tell me about my extremely worthy event, because we need 500 bucks. And I'm sorry to sound callous, but, so if it was just something where we had the restraint to say, this will be infrequent, and on an ad hoc kind of a deal, you know, for an event-based thing, I'm not even sure that we need this kind of, you know, code, other than it should be in the protocol manual or resolution somewhere so that the public is aware of the fund and, and, you know, but, but most of it comes down to just the council having a sort of, it should be that we all feel the same about the purpose of it. If it's called Hearts and Minds, one would think there would be some unanimity about how, about what that means. So that's just kind of, I don't think it needs to be four grand. One time it was up to 7,000 plus. I just don't think it needs to be that big to fulfill the purpose of providing that infrequent, event-based kind of a thing, and that's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then I would like to ask a couple questions after this comment.
I was going to make the motion.
Okay.
If you'd like me to wait, I can do that.
Sure, go ahead and make the motion.
I moved a direct staff to prepare a draft Hearts and Minds Fund Policy I move to direct staff to prepare a draft Hearts and Minds Fund policy consistent with the council's general consensus for consideration and approval at a future meeting.
Do I have a second? Okay. So, we have a, a motion by Councilmember Grace Matsui and a second by Councilmember Oxiger. Any discussion? Well, here's my question. It sounds like there are a couple, uh, issues that might be deal breakers here. So if it's, if we're at a situation where it's a deal breaker for too many of us, then the whole thing is dead. It's just, we do whatever we want on our own. So I'm gonna ask the question, if Hearts and Minds includes offering funding to charities and nonprofit orgs, are there councilmembers who will not want to participate? Please raise your hand. So that's, a majority of the council does not want to participate in Hearts and Minds if funding has a possibility of going to a nonprofit or a charity. If we create a Hearts and Minds Fund that does not include the option of giving money to charity, are there councilmembers who will not want to participate? Two. And, uh, so we have one who, one councilmember who hasn't voted. So, uh, and I'm gonna offer you the, uh, option of making a comment, but then I, I have another question after that.
Yeah, to me, um, this is not an issue of whether we can contribute to charities or not. If we're gonna make it event-based, what if a small charitable organization has just formed and wants to put on an event in the town and they want, you know, that's event-based? The tr- this is the trouble with trying to draft this into a regulation of some kind, is that it just, we have no general consensus on the council. We have a majority consensus perhaps, uh, on limiting what we can do, but I don't believe that we can get to the point where we can actually have, uh, what number four calls for it, the eligibility of items for expenditure of funds. How do we, how do we define that? I, I would not want to task the staff at this point to determine what that is because I don't think there is a general consensus on the council of what that is. Um, you know, uh...
So, Councilmember, if we, if we did create this fund, but one of the parameters was that you're not allowed to make an offering to a nonprofit or a charity, period, whether it was started yesterday or not, would you want to participate?
We already have the fund and I already participate and I would continue to participate no matter what that fund looked like because I think it's a good thing. Uh, I think the council should have the ability to, you know, make a donation uh, when people are sick, when people die, when, uh, a small group wants to put on an event in the town, uh, and needs a little seed money to get started. I think those are all worthy things.
Okay, so what, but what I'm trying to, uh, create here is a majority consensus about something. And so it looks like there are four councilmembers, a majority of the councilmembers do not wanna participate in something like that. So, um, okay, just a moment here. I'm gonna take, I, I have another question, but I'll take these comments here. Uh, so, thank you for those comments, uh, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then I think Councilmember Harris after that. Okay?
Yeah, I just wanna, um, remind us that we're talking about asking staff to come up with a framework, but instead we're debating frameworks. And so we could send this to staff and they could say, one option is, there's absolutely no framework whatsoever. I still believe there should be a resolution establishing the fund and saying who's eligible to participate, what the fund is supposed to do, et cetera. I think that at a bare minimum, that needs to happen. But we're kind of spending time debating what framework we wanna see, maybe trying to get to that general consensus. But staff might come up with three or four options that there can be consensus around. And so, um, while I appreciate this level of activity and obviously it stirs some, uh, feelings from many people, I also think we're, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse without looking at what the possibilities of a framework are.
Can I just clarify something? So, really, staff is, has no involvement with this fund. Um, and it's strictly a council action. And so, you know, staff kind of created these issues and what we would like is direction that then we go take and write the policy. So for issues that aren't resolved, you know, we're not necessarily in the position to be proposing ideas because it isn't this, it isn't city policy, it's strictly a council item. So, um, a goal of this would be great is if we had, and we can really draft anything, but, um, you know, if we had a majority, we, we said general consensus in here, but maybe a majority agreement to address these things or not address them. We'll come back with, with a summary of that in a resolution format.
Uh, Councilmember Harris, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I was actually just gonna say that, um, I don't want staff spending time on something that has nothing to do with public money. So I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to hash it out here, even though it's hashing. Uh, I don't want the staff to have to take time, basically, you know, coming up with our, this is the one thing that's just our deal. Uh, it may, may be a bit more constructive. This is one of those things that, um, there is a set of things here that all seven of us agree upon. And so we should just implement what all seven of us agree upon and then over time, if, um, you know, Hearts and Minds change, then come back to it. But for now, just limit it to what everybody can agree on. This is the, I wasn't being facetious. This is the one thing that, you know, since it isn't public money that all seven of us should agree upon. And I have heard, there are, uh, I've heard support for this thing in some form from all seven of us. And, you know, I certainly don't get everything I want, so, um, just limit this to the set that all seven of us agree upon and, um, be done with it for a while. That's all I got.
Okay. So that, that leads to a similar question that I began with a minute ago. Let me ask a set of questions then. Would all of you agree to, um, sending condolences to, to a family or family members or in regard to a death out of this fund? I, raise your, okay? If somebody died and we wanted to use Hearts and Minds to send condolences, would we all agree on that? That that would be an appropriate thing without vetting? Okay? Would we agree to send condolences to somebody who ended up in, in the hospital in some tragic way without vetting? We all agree on that. Would, do we all agree that we would like to send a portion of Hearts and Minds to a scholar in high school at the end of the year in Dollars for Scholars? Do we all agree we would like to do, send scholarship money? Okay, we don't all agree on that. So, so the, all the things that we, the two things that I see we do agree on, Councilmember Harris, you said several things. Is there something else that...
I think Stephen J. Underwood, I think all of it. I, I don't know, maybe not, but, um...
Out of, out of Hearts and Minds? Okay, does everybody agree that Stephen J. Underwood is a worthy cause for Hearts and Minds each year?
I'm unclear what he means by Stephen J. Underwood.
The Stephen J. Underwood March 7th? Go ahead, go ahead and clarify that, Councilmember.
It's a thousand-dollar scholarship that the Des Moines Dollars for Scholars gives to students who apply on an annual basis. And we typically do it on a March 7 day.
But the dollar, probably scholarship, but in the U of D. That's what I thought it was, okay.
So it goes through the Dollars for Scholars program. It comes out of Hearts and Minds. Who would agree to support that? Okay, it looks like that's unanimous. Uh, so those are three things that we all agree on. Uh, Councilmember Harris, did you have another one of those three? Uh, it does not seem that we have a unanimous agreement on any other particular item. So, Councilmember Mahoney, you have your, go ahead.
The clarification here is, so we agree there, but the one that, uh, it's always a majority rule. So the fact would be if there was a cause, and this may be the way, there was a, and, and I understand how everybody, like you said, talks about voting and stuff, but there's a cause that a majority of the council felt that was worthy, I think everybody would agree that we should support it, or at least...
Not the majority, it would have to be unanimous.
Well, but I'm just saying, you're looking for unanimous here and, and I think there's gotta be an element of, of, of flexibility here in that regard.
Okay, so...
So, what my point is, is if you're gonna go with these three and we don't have that flexibility, then I'm not gonna support it.
That's correct, because what we were saying is, uh, that puts, i- if you have 100% unanimous, um, contribution, you should, and, and I think the opinion is that you should have unanimous agreement on dis- dispersment. And so, uh, and we already established that people who, uh, i- if it was established with that parameter, there are four people who would not participate. So I think, do you see what I'm saying? That all of a sudden, there's four people who don't wanna participate. Uh, Council, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, um, just a question. You seem to say that it was unanimous, unanimous participation in the fund? So we're not gonna have an opt-out?
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is creating, uh, uh, yeah, I was, what I'm trying to do is create parameters for establishing it. Uh, if we, I suppose what we could do is a group of people on the council could get together on their, and do five of these things. Uh, Councilmember Mahoney.
Um, so then, at that point, what's the question of having the fund?
That is a good question. That's a kind of what we're trying to establish here. If we're going to have Hearts and Minds or not, and if we are, we, we seem to have a disagreement about whether it should be unanimous or not. And, and it almost seems like if it's not, there are members that won't participate and then it seems like it might be up to ourselves.
So the only thing is, is that this is a democratic process that, um, that not all of us will ever agree on. And I'm, I just think that you're trying to get something that's, that we all agree on that will never be that. It has to be, if the issue comes up, the motion is made. Those that decide to and not, if it, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. If it passes, it passes. It's just gotta work that way. There's, there's nothing to it and whatever a councilmember or a group of councilmembers may feel compelled to do, um, that's what they do. I don't think this thing was broke. And I don't think that getting stuck on a part here that, that you're asking this question's gonna get us anywhere. I, I think we're gonna disagree where a few of us, what'll end up being is it'll be disbanded.
Mm-hmm.
Because we don't have it, and that's not the purpose here. We're getting policy in the way of what, what really the intent here was. And, uh, like I said, I'll just go back to the fact, this wasn't broken. It doesn't need to be fixed.
Uh, Councilmember Netting.
I have to agree with, uh, Councilmember Mahoney. And, um, i- if that's the case, I, I actually make a motion that the, uh, um, the fund be discontinued and dispersed and brought back to council on the remaining balance being distributed between, um, local organizations to vote on later.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second.
Do you already have a motion that's been...
Uh, that's correct. We do have a motion, so that would be a subsidiary motion. But we can't, if, uh, you are, we, staff has been, um, moved to direct staff to prepare Hearts and Minds. So what, uh, what we're going to do is mo- vote on the first motion. If we don't want staff to do that right now, but we want something else, we can make a motion for the other thing. So, uh, can I withdraw? Can, can we? He's made a motion and we haven't voted on it. Can I withdraw this second motion? Uh, go ahead, I'll, I'll call on, uh, Councilmember Oxiger.
Since this is our money, the council's money.
Oh, wait, just a minute. I, I need to solve the motion problem first. Okay? So how do we, do I ask them to withdraw that because...
Well, so we have a general motion, um...
The direct staff?
Yeah.
To create something, and he just, uh, he just made a motion to disband it.
Yeah.
So you can't disband something and then vote on a motion of something that doesn't exist? Yeah, so they had, he has to withdraw that motion first.
I'm, I'm using my city manager mind, so it's not doing the parliamentary seizure.
Though, one thing is, is that, uh, the motion is that the council's general consensus, and I'm not sure we have one. So how can we vote on something we don't have a general consensus?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second in regard to moving the staff to direct and prepare Hearts and Minds Fund policy consistent with the council's general consensus. And so, uh, all in favor?
No, are, are we still in discussion?
Well...
Well, okay.
I...
I, this is what I wanted to, to raise the issue of and, and for some sort of determination. Is it even appropriate for us to be using staff time to, to determine how seven people, seven people contributing individually, what does this have to do with city business?
Okay.
Well, I, I guess, I mean, you're a city council. You donate money that's held in a bank account owned by the city. So it's not, it really is, I mean, that's why we're debating it in public. You're not meeting at someone's house to decide this. We're subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. So it is your money, but there is an element of, of government to it. Um, so I think it's appropriate that we're discussing it here. I think it's appropriate if there have been questions by the council about how, how it's spent, that the council has a policy, just like there's policies on every, pretty much everything. So, um, I don't think it's an issue of, of should be, be having staff spend time on it. Um, we're not spending a lot of time on it, probably spending more time tonight than we will in the future. But, but yeah, I, I don't think that's an issue. Um, so, um, but yes, in order to draft a, a policy, staff needs direction.
Okay, so there is a motion to direct staff to, to pre- to prepare a Hearts and Minds Fund policy consistent with council's consensus. But if the council ha- moves and seconds to disband it, then that motion is null and void? Or you just, because there, because what happens is the first motion then is considering something that doesn't exist? Do you see what I'm saying? So, so should we withdraw that second motion? Vote on the first motion and then attend to the second question?
I will not withdraw the second motion.
Uh, point of order, shouldn't, shouldn't Councilmember Netting's, uh, motion be in the, be as an amendment to the original motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So he's, so he's moving to, to substitute the language to say, disband the fund. So that, that answers your question as, as, you know, whether or not it would be a moot question.
Correct.
So you had a second, so you can vote on the motion to amend the original motion.
Okay, could you, uh, restate the original motion with the amendment, please?
I move to amend the original motion to disband the fund of Hearts and Minds and to be brought back to council with the ending fund balance and distribution to possible charities and funds within the community.
And there was a second, correct?
Yep.
All right, any discussion on that motion? All in favor? I have Councilmember Netting, myself, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Oxiger in favor.
Just amended the motion. So you'd still need to make a motion to pa- or...
So you'd still need to make a motion to pa- or, so we'll have to move to pass that amended motion.
He made the motion.
To amend.
He seconded it.
Yeah.
Discussion.
The result of that vote is that we now have the amended motion on the table.
Okay.
So you can, yeah, you can ask to vote again.
Uh, on, on the amended motion, okay, so.
There's discussion on the amended.
Okay. Is there discussion on the amended motion? Councilmember, uh, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Harris.
You know, I really, I, I don't think this is worth getting rid of. Um, I wish there was a, a willingness on the council to have this be broader and less structured. But, um, you know, the, as far as at least number four of the six, seven points, uh, that were suggested for discussion, um, you know, the eligibility of items for the expenditure of funds, there, I think we all pretty much agree, uh, on at least three of those. Um, and we've laid that out pretty clearly. But I don't think that we should get rid of that. So I'm, I'm opposed to your motion, uh, because I want to keep Hearts and Minds Fund and I want to be able to do things from the deus that are appropriate.
I'm opposed to my motion too, but we're not gonna come to a consensus and we need to make a decision.
Councilmember Harris.
I move to amend Councilmember Netting's motion and retain the fund, limiting any one contribution to one hundred dollars and the council to distribute the balance of the fund at the end of every year to a mutually agreed upon, um, either one or a group of, uh, charities.
Is that suitable?
With no, with no limitation, just to understand. Every meeting you could.
You gotta keep your motion to a motion.
Oh, uh, okay, I, I think it's pretty, uh, I, I move to limit the contribution at any meeting to one hundred dollars and the fund balance to be, uh, spent on a mutually agreed, uh, charity, uh, organization or group of organizations at the end of every calendar year.
Do I have a second? Okay, fails for lack of a second. Any other comments on the amended motion offered by Councilmember Netting? Councilmember Mahoney.
Um, I agree with both of you, both of my colleagues here on the fact that this is a shame that it's come to this point. But, uh, it needs to be broad, it was designed to be broad. And the thing is, is if something less than that is approved, then I will simply remove myself from the Hearts and Minds Fund because I can dictate the money. Not as much, I mean, with us all here, we have the ability to do more, but unfortunately it's turned to that, to that situation. So, um, that's, that's where I'm at. That's why, um, it's, uh, either keep it broad or, or, um, or I'll have to exit the program. And, and, and it's with great reluctance that I do so.
Any other discussion on the amended motion by Councilmember Netting? All right, so I'm gonna call the vote, all in favor of Councilmember Netting's motion. Raise your right hand. I have Councilmember Netting, myself, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Oxiger in favor, against. I have Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Harris and Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. So the motion for, uh, disbanding and coming back with a balance passes four, two, three. Okay. So, uh, that's the end of our discussion items. Uh, if you saw that we were to enter an executive session, that's been postponed till further date. I do want to bring up, I do want to rec, um, bring to your attention Senate Bill five nine five five, which is a port package bill that's, uh, coming up for, uh, in front of Ways and Means on Saturday morning. It is fifteenth in line of eighteen. It doesn't look like it has op- opposition, it looks like it'll pass, but it needs to be approached. So if you could sign up pro, if you are pro of, this is a port package bill, Senate Bill five nine five five. Our next meeting date is February eighth, twenty twenty-four. It's a regular city council meeting. And Councilmember Grace Matsui, would you like to move to adjourn?
I move, I move that we adjourn.
Uh, so, and I have a second with Councilmember, uh, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, all in favor? I.